It is 5:30. If we could call the Amherst exempted village board of education a regular meeting to order, please, if we can stand and pledge allegiance.
And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of its worth, liberty, and justice for all.
We please call the roll.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mrs. Gillett.
Absent.
Dr. Messer.
Present.
Mrs. Wachholz.
Present.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
We may take your recommendation four to adopt the agenda as it's presented with any addendums that you receive. There are motion and a second.
Second.
Is there discussion or comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Wachholz.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
We need to appoint a treasurer pro temp this evening to preside over the meeting on August 15th and take the minutes. That treasurer pro temp would be sitting right here with us. Okay, someone like to make that motion? So. Is there discussion on that? If not, call the roll.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mrs. Wachholz.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
They didn't trust one of us to do it, you see that, right? No, just to be. She had it ordered and everything. Okay. Item six is the recommendation to appoint a board member as the delegate and an alternate to the Ohio School Boards Association annual meeting and Columbus Capitol Conference to be held on 11/14. Typically, we would disappoint that. Is there anyone who?
I have a question. Can the delegates and the liaison be the same person? Or is it out to be different for all four?
They can be the same person because the delegate only has a role that day. Yes, the delegate only has a role that day. The rest of that role will be until the end of the year, we believe. And then we will appoint a new liaison starting in January again. We confirm that from that perspective. And that's correct.
Right.
Yeah. So. Is there anybody that would like to volunteer? If not, I will just appoint all of them.
For all four of them, you mean, or what, just me?
Well, we're going to do the delegate first. So Mark will be the delegate, okay? And the alternate will be Teresa. That way you guys can watch that. Okay? So we would need to take a motion on that, please. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mrs. Wachholz.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Then the recommendation to appoint the student achievement and the legislative liaison person. My recommendation there would be the legislation person to be sitting here, the student person to be sitting here. That way you're all doing something. Is there any discussion on that? Oh, is we need to motion on that? Sure. You can motion, yeah. In second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? These are the kind of things I like. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Wachholz.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
I don't think anyone signed up to talk to us this evening. So we can move on from that. Okay? Item eight is public hearing. The opportunity for anyone in the public to give input on the 23, 24 calendar school year. I don't believe that anyone in the room would have anything they'd like to talk about or ask questions about. If they do, they probably have the answer from somebody on staff. They're all on staff. So I don't think we need to do anything there. We would go to the treasurer's report. Madam Treasurer.
Right, so the treasurer does not have a report today. She is just requesting that the recommendations be approved and it would be 10A through 10G.
We have a motion? We have a motion and a second. As far as report goes, she did send an update to everyone Friday or Saturday after July 15th came. So that you would all know what the plan was and get any questions. And I think there was a couple of questions that got answered from that perspective. So is there any discussions or any comments on 10A through 10G? None? Shall we call the roll, please?
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mrs. Wachholz.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Now we go to the first superintendent of Mike Molnar's report. I'm sure there's another link.
It is a couple of items, Mr. Engel. But yeah, some of the items are actually questions that came from board members or throughout the last month or so that I just wanted to highlight and talk about real quick. The first one is the K-12 school safety grant program. This is actually from the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, not from OD or state or federal grant, which is the organization that also supports Powers Elementary School and school buildings. So this is from them. I shared in a video and we'll discuss with some of you that we were approved going backwards to last year. So our application in 2021, which was at first denied for $136,579 for security cameras and security systems at NORD, AGH and STEEL, was then after the governor announced $100 million towards school safety, they kind of retroactively went back and approved anyone who had applied. So Steve got the notification a couple of days ago and forwarded to me. So then I contacted Jean Stevenson from the Grants and Procurement Administrator, let her know that I'm the superintendent. And there was information on how to go ahead and move forward to access the funds. So, but the link wasn't working. So I emailed her, let her know that the link wasn't working for my email. Maybe it's for all of them, I'm not sure. So I emailed her that this weekend, waiting for a reply. But as soon as I get that reply, I'm going to apply and do all the proper procedures so we can access money, which as you know, has been happening. I have two pictures here on the slide. That is the new intercom system at AGH and NORD. So you can see it's very clear. I mean, one of the issues we've had in the past is even though we've had a few security cameras in place, it's very, they're old and difficult to even see people. So we got to tell who these people are to show us their IDs. They're really, really good. Also, one item we have tonight on the board agenda is a waiver for career technical education for the junior high. So in Ohio, school districts are required to have seventh, eighth grade courses in career tech. If a school district or board chooses not to, then there's a waiver they have to complete to basically say they're not providing those courses. We have done the waiver the last couple of years when this was first introduced. The reason being is because we do have courses that would apply toward career tech such as Family Consumer Science, Design 1 and 2, possibly our coding class at AGH. But if you are officially a CTE course, then you have to go by the exact curriculum and even the assessments, which some of the assessments are high school level assessments. And so in conversation with our teachers over the past couple of years, they've always chosen to not be officially a CTE course because there's more freedom in what they can do in their units and projects and so on. And I have an example, a picture up here with Dan Korleski and in one of his design classes, they're doing rockets there. That's not in the curriculum for CTE, but it's something that he can do because it's his academic freedom what we want to do in Amherst. So it's unfortunate that we have to kind of put a resolution or a waiver that says we don't give CTE courses officially because we really do, they're just not official. Yes?
So if it was a CTE course, would they get some kind of student get a certificate or something saying that they had gone through all of this? Or how does it help that if it is a CTE?
Exactly. So in the past couple of years, really the past two years or so, they have started giving credentials for the workplace and seals on diplomas. And so it is something that we should revisit because now there might be greater benefit for students if it is an official CTE course, which means we have to go through the process of aligning that curriculum, getting it approved and so on. So I, and we did talk about this and review this right before the pandemic hit two years ago. So I think it probably would be appropriate time to meet Mr. Gibson, the principal, and review those with the teachers and see if we might be able to align it. Because again, we're not here for the students. So if we can make both work somehow, we can maybe do that. So it's good. Wanted to mention this real quick. I had an opportunity to meet with Tina Kimbrough from the North Family Foundation, which you know is located here in Amherst. Last spring, they wanted to start a project where their goal was to work with Lorraine County districts and access our data on students and their achievement and how many of students are taking advanced placement courses, college grade plus courses? Because their goal is to analyze what's happening in the county and see if we are doing a great job in providing academic rigor for all of our students, especially students in populations such as black students, Hispanic students, racial students, low socioeconomic students. And so she contacted me. I had her come in, we met, we had a great meeting. And so I am going to connect with her. Sarah Walker is going to participate. Also Jenna Korstotzky, our EMS coordinator, because it has to do with data. But my goal is to really get the data she asked for because they could help us look at the data. And the result is what really what they want to do is they want to then provide opportunities and resources and funding for schools to continue to provide these kind of rigorous courses to all students. And I think it's a wonderful thing, something we talked about when I went through the interview process with the board for this position. So it's perfect timing. I'm so glad she reached out. She did share that there's been some struggle getting the data from all the school districts. And I asked her about, you know, have our EMS people involved? And she says she wasn't aware of that. So I think it's a good idea to get our data people involved who really knows what reports they can pull, what data they can get to give them the right data to do that. So I think it's going to be a good thing. So I'll keep you updated as we move forward with that this fall.
Thank you, very interested in that.
Yes. And last, I think last update is about House Bill 999, which is a bill to allow boards of education to arm teaching staff in the school district if they so choose. I know that the board's goal was to have a revised and updated board policies regarding this, hopefully before school started. If you want to read from my update, that is not completed yet. So Neola, where we get our board policies from, along with our legal counsel to review all those, we actually are receiving them any moment now. As soon as we do receive them, I will get a draft of those two policies specifically to all of you to look at. And that draft will be kind of our current board policies, which with all the strike throughs, you can see the prior and the new. Okay? But I did want to share with the community and with all of you just to say that currently, legal counsel said that we, staff members cannot carry firearms on school grounds unless it was approved by the board, which would be an actual agenda item on a board agenda, voted by the board to approve that. So there's no loopholes or anything there, even with the new law that came out. Next slide. So because it wasn't prepared for the board meeting, I'd be happy to, if you'd like, the board would like me to work on possibly a statement of something, official statement from the board, I'd be happy to do that. Where you can all review that, put it to the legal counsel and we can maybe put that to the public so they know where our stance is. I have been contacted by many parents and public members so far, asking me specifically our position. I was also contacted by Taylor Robinson of News 5. And I wanted to share with you my exact quote to her, which I'll share with the community, which is, "Amherst Board of Education has decided to not permit staff members to carry firearms on school property. The administrative team, principals, et cetera, the Amherst Teachers Association, the Amherst Police Department all support this position. And so the Amherst schools in cooperation with the city of Amherst, we do employ two school resource officers who do a phenomenal job in supporting and protecting our students and staff." And that's kind of where the position that we're at. And I will tell the board that so far, every community member that has talked with me or asked a question, have shared information, it's been 100% support on that position. So I will update you if we get any more feedback from anyone or any updates on that regarding House Bill 99. All right?
When did Taylor reach out to you?
It was August, well, the original email went to Steve. So he forwarded to me, I think it was around August 8th or 9th. So just a week ago.
All right, great.
And I haven't seen any report.
There hasn't been any report that I've heard about on an update and publication by anyone.
And I imagine she's probably gathering it from like all.
All, all of them. Because you know, there are a few that went immediately.
That concludes my report.
Questions for Michael?
Yeah, I have a question for that. So, well, I guess the board here. So when we politicize our position, are we going to do a formal resolution? Like, or are we just going to have like a quote? Like, how do we want to politicize that?
Well, we can certainly do a formal resolution. I don't think the resolution will be necessary if we have the updated policy. Because if we update, if we do the policy, it should reflect what the resolution would be anyway. So I would think that if we have it within the next couple of weeks, we just do that. I think Michael's statement could serve as that now because he can incorporate in there that, you know, we are waiting on the updated policies from legal counsel from that perspective. That way we don't have to have a resolution. I know Lorraine made a special resolution because they wanted it known immediately because I guess they were bombarded with questions about being permitted to carry guns. Okay? That was what I heard from another board member. So they passed a resolution immediately. While they were waiting also, the JBS did not pass a resolution. They are waiting for the updated stuff to come out, the updated policy to come out as well. So I think that it depends upon the district. I think, you know, Cleveland did a resolution immediately. And I think Akron did a resolution immediately. But I think locally, I don't think anyone other than Lorraine has done a resolution that I'm aware of.
And just so you're aware, I mean, I've only received questions about it in three emails and maybe two in person as I've gotten about a different event. So that's been a large. I know, I know the board spoke about it also at last board meeting. So hopefully everyone's watching the YouTube channel and maybe they've gotten information that way. But I will, because it is such an important issue, I'm not going to wait for Neola to have a meeting. We have a meeting with someone from Neola to kind of go over all the policies together. As soon as I have that, I'll share it with you immediately because that's so important.
And so the statement probably could go in. We're doing an opening day or opening week or an open newsletter, I assume, somewhere in the next 20 days.
There is a statement, a short statement in the newsletter that should be going out for school. It's what that.
So if your statement is in there, you know, where we stand, I think that would be more than enough at this time. If everyone's agreed, we need to have a special resolution. Okay?
Yeah.
Other comments or questions?
I just have a question on the safety area. Being that it was retro, are we eligible this year for another one?
So the remaining, I think, 40, 53 million, the remaining 53 million is available for schools that did not apply in the original round. So that would, so we can apply for additional funds, but only for Powers Elementary School, which is a new building, which is why we didn't apply for the first time because it is a brand new building, brand new cameras and systems. But I am sure that we can come up with some other safety features in the building for Powers Elementary School we can apply in the new grant as well for the remaining.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for Michael? Before we move on, I think someone signed in to address this in the public. So let's take that. Mr. Walker, can you please stand, state your name and your address for us?
Reverend Kurt Walker. I live at 470 Long Street. And the question I had, you just answered, Mike. Obviously, I was concerned about the executive order of legislation, whatever it was, that was talking about arming teachers with 24 hours of training. Obviously against that, don't want to see that. I think it's inappropriate for a number of reasons I won't go into. I think they're obvious, at least to me. So you just addressed it and I thank you very much. I'm glad to hear that.
Thanks for coming.
We discussed it a few times and so, yeah.
Yep.
All right, great, that was easy. I'm glad we did that when we did.
Easy, easy peasy.
So now we will move on to the first reported of the assistant superintendent, Sarah Walker. She's pregnant, right? I'll be the superintendent.
I'm going to do my best. Top act will follow. So on the agenda, there is a recommendation to approve an addendum for Lorraine County Public Health contract that we had placed on the board minutes in the spring. And reason for this is initially, when we were planning for this year, we had, you know, had conversations and we were looking to take our clinic aid and our clinic staffing back down to Greek pandemic levels. But then after a lot of conversation and dialogue over the summer, we met with a couple of the LPNs, you know, what that would have meant would have been, NORD and STEEL would have been sharing an LPN. So at some point during the day, leaving one of those buildings while students were present without support in the clinic. And so after some discussion, Mike and I agreed that, you know, we reached out to Lorraine County Public Health to see if they could get an additional LPN for us. And they, Felicia Mitchell is going to be joining us this year. She'll be at Powers with Jillian Hunter, who we added last year. And then Cindy Zaki, who has been at Powers for a very long time, requested a change of scenery. And so she's going to be going to NORD this year, which is going to be great because she knows all the kids and she knows all the players. And so she's very excited about that move. Holly Harding will still be at the Junior High. She is one of our LPNs through Public Health. Her and Felicia are both through Public Health. And then Michelle Opel will be remaining at STEEL. So that's why you see that on the board minutes is to add that time, that additional support to that. Another thing, oddly enough, still about Lorraine County Public Health. This week, or actually late last week, in fact, the CDC, the Ohio Department of Health and the Ohio Department of Education released new updates regarding the COVID protocols. They are no longer, the paragraph from the email we received is there, but the long and short of it is they are no longer doing contact tracing unless they are in high-risk facilities such as nursing homes or hospitals. They are rolling back the mask-to-stay, test-to-play policy that they had in place or the protocol that they had in place last year. And now, and this was in place in the spring, but they're continuing into this year that if a family or an individual is symptomatic, they recommend that they immediately take a rapid test. If that test is positive, they must isolate for five days. If at the end of the five days, they have been fever-free for 24 hours without medication and their symptoms are improving, then they can return to their activities as long as they wear a mask for another five days. Now, how that's all going to play out and what we're going to see, there's a public health update from the commissioner, Mark Adams, tomorrow morning with the superintendents. So as soon as we have more definitive or more information, we will share that out with you. But it's good news because it means that we are on the path to, you know, returning to where we want to be. And then some additional things just going on. You'll see on the board agenda, on Wednesday this week, Corey and I are hosting our special education kickoff. And that's some professional development day we've done every year where we bring all of the intervention specialists and speech pathologists and special ed staff in for training that is specific to them. What we're doing differently this year is while in the morning, Corey Rourke, who is our new special ed coordinator and preschool coordinator, and I are going to be giving them updates specific to special education. In the afternoon, we have Michelle Baskin from ADA Outreach coming out to focus on behavioral strategies for all kids in the classroom setting. And we've invited the staff from NORD and the staff from Powers to join us for that as well because we want to serve kids in the greater community. And so the more we can get our teachers that information, on the whole, I think the better off all of our kids will be. And then Erica Kaufman, who is one of our literacy coaches, is going to be working with our sixth through 12th grade intervention specialists on literacy and specialty design instruction. So it should be a very informative, also exhausting kind of day, but it'll be a lot of good information shared. And then Friday is our new teacher orientation where we will be meeting with our new teachers, our new title tutors, as well as our new paraprofessionals in the morning to welcome them to the family. So it's going to be a busy week, but it's going to be a good week. And that concludes my report.
How many new teachers are there?
I can tell you.
That was a question I would ask.
How many new teachers?
How many new teachers do we have coming into the system?
Including the pairs and the teachers, it's approximately 15? About 15.
But they're not all teachers.
They're not all teachers. Some are title teachers.
And the reason that question I think I got asked is because there's so many schools that don't have enough teachers.
Yes.
And they're struggling. And that was the question, are we struggling with teachers? I said, I don't think we're struggling with hiring teachers. And they said, how many new teachers did you have to hire? I said, I can't tell you off the top of my head where you get that information from.
Twelve would be a good number to you.
Okay.
Yeah, twelve is a good number. And as of right now, all of our teaching positions have been filled. So.
I told them I didn't think they had any open teaching positions.
Yeah, no, open teaching positions right now.
What time they ask you. Questions, color for Sarah?
I had a comment about the nurses just thinking for having a nurse at every school because that's the thing I'm going to be asked about.
Yes.
I hope that I'll get yelled at for it, but yes.
Our goal is to anticipate those questions and provide the answers prior to. I was too. But she, she came to us with that. She's like, so you maybe hadn't thought about this? And I was like, never crossed my mind. But yeah. Yes.
Any other questions for Sarah? If not, JBS is in the process of getting ready to open school. They've done their freshman orientation last week. I don't really have any much more to tell you about because we haven't met yet. So I don't know other than that. I know they'll have a booth at the fair, which is happening next week. Again, the enrollment is still where it was when I told you last week that it's going to be last month. It was going to be one of the highest enrollments. That's still on target for that. So if you have any questions, I'll certainly get the answers for you. Okay? But otherwise, their official day, I believe, is the 29th. Teachers was today, but their official first day for students, I believe, is the 29th. Right?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay? There's where we are. Okay? They are struggling with getting some teachers. It's because they need specific teachers. I mean, they don't need, you know, you've got to be able to teach auto mechanics. You probably have to be able to deal with the auto.[1673.36] You probably don't be able to deal with the auto. You can't just, you know, it's not necessarily all, you've got to be able to do the hands-ons. I know that they are struggling to find a couple of teachers to fill specific programs, as well as the adult ed program as well. So just so you're aware. Okay? Any questions? Any committee reports that I neglected?
Transportation.
Okay, transportation. Okay?
So we met Tuesday and Mrs. Wackles jumped in and found us something. So the chief of, Kaufman.
Kaufman.
He was there and we discussed the current TrackStar GPS tracking software. We asked some questions about, you know, there've been parents who were asking, maybe we could get an app or something, have like real-time updates or whatnot of what's going on with the buses. It seems like it's delayed, like a lot of the communication. And so he expressed his concern about, well, you may not want to have specific, I guess, location and whatever information out there, you know, for safety reasons, but I'm just asking, like, is there a way that we can, a safer way to, like, just have real-time information of just delays? Not necessarily, oh, they're at the corner of Pine and Fifth, you know, whatever, just like Bus 20, it would be delayed 10 minutes or, you know, and you don't get that notification 40 minutes after your child gets home. So that was one thing. We took a bus tour, not a bus tour, but the bus garage tour. It was all the office areas, the main mound area, maintenance days, things like that, storage areas. And of course, we all know, needs to be updated, but they're doing their best with what they have right now. We talked about their clock-in system, so it would be nice if they got newer computers and things like that. So Mr. Miroff is helping with that. And then they discussed the process of updating the fleet of buses and their discovery, again, with TrackStar. I guess they didn't really know what TrackStar is or the capabilities and, you know, there's like panic buttons and stuff in buses. So we're looking into, instead of moving to a different system, what they're, what they first, they think about, they're like, oh, well, we need to learn the system first and see, you know, if we value added to say this system or not. So we'll see about that. But hopefully we can get some type of better information to the parents as well, just about families. And then so my observations, and again, people have heard. So the successes I've seen, you know, the passing inspection, the passing inspection since Mrs. Ford, Mrs. Ford took over, you know, like that, you're a maintenance personnel. They're continuing to update the fleet and keep the buses nice. Some of the barriers I've seen is, again, they didn't know about TrackStar, so they have to learn that system. And hopefully can implement that to use all the functionality of it. Obviously, we all know they need updated facilities. And a major barrier I see is just communication between the bus garage and the school buildings. So, yeah, that's a whole other area, but that's the end of what I have. Does there happen to be?
The only thing I would say, the TrackStar, that was predicated on if the police department keeps it.
Yeah.
So if the police department continues with TrackStar, then we will obviously, the transportation department will, but they're looking to possibly move away from it. So if they do, then we'll have to find something here horrible to be independent of. But to your point, as far as the facility goes, just beyond the border, it's horrible. So we really need to look into getting something done for that. The buses have gotten larger, the building's still the same size. You can't even fit a bus in the garage. So you got, what, two feet literally, or less, to walk around a bus to work on it, you know? And, I mean, they got them jacked up. It's just not safe all the way around. So as we discovered, I think it's very important that we look to try to pursue something for them, not to miss the buses that are sitting outside. What do we figure, six, six to eight years premature that we're not getting out of those buses because they're being weathered outside? So, you know, there's a saving from there. So, but yeah, I mean, that's, that's pretty much what we're at with that.
Questions for the committee?
So you mentioned that they didn't even know what they had on the buses. And it made me think of, like, at least my situation from the end, they wish I had been like a handbook or something for me, the board members, wishing I were working on that. Is there some kind of like handbook for like new transportation workers or something so that they know like all the things they have in their bus? I think maybe just like across the board or not.
I don't.
We're not giving people information correctly?
It wasn't, it wasn't that they didn't know what they had on the buses. Tia didn't know that they had TrackStar, but the bus drivers knew the panic and the equipment that was on the bus. And they didn't know they had the software at home. Right?
You know, the functionality. So.
Yeah.
It was like a pass off, it seems like. Between, between the other supervisor and her, it seemed like there was a handoff of information. It seemed like they really didn't know.
I don't think there was any.
Oh, okay.
I think the person left and then we started.
I think that the software was done after, when Tia first got it. That wasn't here previous.
No, I don't think it was either. It came.
It came after.
Not with her, but she requested that, brought that because she had used that.
Right.
I do believe. Yeah, there was no handoff. There was no, it was the person that had to depart it and leave.
Got it.
Yeah. And we hired someone who had to pick up and recreate and do, which is good and bad.
Other questions for the committee? If not, is there any other committee reports that anyone has? If not, we go to personnel recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. First, I want to just thank the board for their patience. There's, there are a lot of items, especially in personnel. It is August, school's starting. And usually, I mean, in the last 10 years, we usually have an additional special board meeting in August because we always have so many different personnel items that we always have to have a special meeting to approve people. Because while I can approve people starting a job, they can't get paid until it's board approved. So oftentimes, if we don't have that, someone could be working from August, possibly even through September, and possibly not get paid until the board approved in September, which means the first paycheck might not be till October. So our goal, Janet did a phenomenal job, our goal is to try to get all of the items on here as possible so we can get accomplished before school starts and hopefully not have a special board meeting. So with that, I'd like to take one specific personnel recommendation and do that ahead of time for the other ones. And that is, if you look at personnel recommendation, letter F. Originally, in the first version, the very first person on that was Karen Ashbury, which you can see on the board agenda there. She accepted the position and then just today declined the position citing some family issues. Fortunately, Mr. Tepner, when he goes through an interview process, had another person right behind, ready to go. And so I'd like to replace Karen, if you can strike that out, and add this new person in, in her place. And the name is Corinne, C-A-R-I-N-E, Bryda, B-R-Y-D-A. And it's still the same exact 60-day probationary contract, part-time, 2.75-hour monitor at Powers effective 8/25/2022. And if the board would make that change today, that, that would be awesome for that person. So I'd like to make that recommendation for F, to make that change. And if we could, Mr. Engel, vote on that possibly.
We'll take item F right now. Entertained a motion for personnel item F.
Sure.
Motion in a second. Is there discussion or comments on that? Hearing none, it's called a roll.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackles?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye. Okay?
All right. So the other personnel recommendations are your classic August personnel recommendations with new hires, substitute hires, a lot of professional development that we're still actually going to have between now and the first day of school, a week and a few days. So those are your standard items. I do want to point out two quick items. One is item double A, which is an item to approve Dave Roush as an athletic trainer and coverage for football for this school year. Dave is not our normal athletic trainer, but we need coverage for when our normal athletic trainer is not available. And one is including this Saturday for the JV game. And so wanted to get that approved for that. And I did want to make a comment that Dave is going to be there for that and he's going to volunteer. He just wanted to volunteer his time to support our program and just take the place. So we're actually not going to pay him for that. So I just wanted to thank Dave for volunteering just out of the goodness of his heart. I appreciate that. And then item double C, I want to make mention, just because we don't see this very often. But we normally have staff members go to conferences in Ohio, Columbus, Cincinnati, state conferences. Oftentimes, people present as well. We don't often have staff members go to national conferences. So I want to point that out, unless they are presenting or they're asked to speak, which we do. But if it's important to them to attend a national conference, which usually is in another state or far away, our past practice is that we ask that staff member to pick up the, usually the airfare costs to make it to the national conference. And then we cover registration, meals, and hotel, just like we would if they were in Ohio. So just want to let you know that's been a past practice of ours because if we were to prove national conferences, I mean, that could actually kind of build up quite a bit. And everyone usually understands that absolutely. So it's like we're paying them to go to a high conference, but it might be in San Diego, Hawaii, Florida, Minnesota, wherever it may be. So I just want to point that. So Deanne Keltley is attending the National Services School Nutrition Association National Industry Conference in San Diego. And so she, she wanted to pay for her own airfare if the board's willing to pick up the other costs. So I just wanted to point that out. So Dr. Messer, I want you to know the kind of procedure for out-of-state conferences. Okay? With that, I'd like to recommend the remaining items, items A through E and G through double C.
Any other motions?
Second.
Motion in a second. Comments or questions on any of those motions? I mean, items? None, it's called a roll.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackles?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Item 14 on tonight's agenda would be educational recommendations. There are seven items for the board recommending items A through G. One is the Career Tech Education waiver that I mentioned earlier. Another one is F, the school health services contract that Ms. Walker spoke of, and a couple of other items like music therapy for our students come up this year. Item D is for professional development for dyslexia through the ESC. And so those are the other items there in education recommendations. So I'd like to recommend those for the board, Mr. Engel. So 14A through G?
Correct.
Is there any com, motion?
No.
In a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there discussion or comments?
Who's going to make the therapy? Like, who's that going to respond to?
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Wackles?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye. Item 15 would be business recommendations.
Yes, Mr. Engel, there are four items. The first one is the agreement with the City of Amherst for our school resource officers, which we've had the past couple of years, great partnership. Also, there's the item for water logic, which actually is for our water coolers. I think, Hannah, you worked on that? Thank you for that. Item C is a resolution of ours in the board of education. It's a resolution for the use of our logo in the district. So make one comment on that. We had passed a resolution in 2019, which had kind of directions for a licensing agreement for any outside entity or person who wanted to use our logo for retail business use. And so at our board retreat, we had discussions about that licensing agreements and where we're at and the difficulty of creating license agreements, following up on them, charging businesses and community, even individuals for that. So the discussion we had was to change the license agreement to just a registration process, where people can register to use the logo. We discussed it being free of charge and right now maybe being registration to do every year, but once it's approved, then they're free to use our logo. And then also have the possibility of if anyone is inappropriate using our logo, to, that there could potentially be a fine. So this resolution is just an update from the 2019 resolution, which I just really changed one simple part about a licensing agreement to just simple registration. And we kind of kept it kind of general so the procedures that we do internally with that, we can do whatever we want with those procedures.
And specifically doesn't have a fine associated with it because it depends on the severity of what they've done. Correct?
Correct.
And I think that's the way it was originally discussed. Do you recall that part?
A little bit. I guess the question I have is can, can we fine? Can we fine?
We can fine them because it's going to say in there that if they don't register, then they can be reprimanded somehow. Yeah. So we can do a fine to them. I mean, it doesn't have to be a fine. We can just tell them that they're not allowed to use it. And if they do, then we could take legal action. So I mean, or you can pay this $100 fine, $50 fine, or whatever fine we would choose to use it. Michael did do research with the treasurer's office. And in the, from 19 to current, we've only had one person register. That person wrote us a check, the check bounced. So we never got paid for that anyway. So it was a, the time that was spent on trying to collect the $200 or the $250 or whatever it was, helped to make that decision when Michael presented that. And I thought, yeah, I agree. You know, because that took time from the treasurer's office to try to collect that money, then the check bounced. So, you know, it was a whole ordeal. We still never collected that money as far as I recall. Correct?
Was that same person using it?
I don't know whether they're using it or not. I don't think they are using it anymore, no, because of the summing up.
And how are we going to police this? Does it like tattle on the guy or how, how are we going?
Yeah. Well, I mean, that was the original issue is that we don't have a department for trademarking. And so that is the reason why we were changing this because we just did not have the capacity to monitor, follow-up, license everyone. And so I created a simple Google registration form that will keep track of everyone's registration, their name, information, email, business entity, everything. And so it'll be much easier to keep track of those. And we'll basically be making the list for future reference to when we want to see that registered, if we want to do it every year, or whether it's a one-time thing, we can make those decisions. So it's going to be a much easier process than giving them a licensing agreement, having to fill it out, bring it back to us, send them a check.
So I think I read, so the complaints go to Casey?
Originally, it was for the superintendent or the athletic director to manage this process.
I personally think that should register every year.
I agree with that. And then I think we also discussed that when they register, the benefit of registering is you get the file. You're not like having to create anything, like you're registering for the exact file, like colors and everything that are Amherst's company. And so that would like encourage people, I can just register and it just shows up through my email, is that still?
Yeah, great point. So the process would be, it's free, they could register using a very simple Google form, we get the information. When they do, we would send them the guidelines of exactly our logo and all of the details of how to do it properly. And then we have that information for like future years or next year, we would have the database to send them a reminder to re-register in July or whenever before school starts again. So we have kind of a process laid out, which is approved by the board. I can share that process with you and then we can get that going. Because we wanted to kind of get it going right away before school started, athletic events and things were coming. And then our last item is item D for business recommendations, which are bus routes, which after approved, does have approval to update and change them starting tomorrow if we have to add bus stops or anything. So I'd like to recommend items, business recommendation, items A through D.
Motion in a second for business recommendation? So comments or questions that Michael hasn't shared? Hearing none, it's called a roll.
Mrs. Wackles?
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
I don't believe there's a need for an executive session? Okay. Sure. So with that, we've entertained a motion to adjourn. We have a motion in a second for adjournment. Any discussion or comments? Before we do that, do you want to talk about opening day? Have you been sending an email to these guys?
To all of you or the staff?
To us.
To the board. So in the, in the update, I put that the opening ceremony is on Tuesday, August 23rd, 7:30 a.m. We'll have breakfast starting around 7:00, so if you'd like to come early, that would be wonderful. And we try to keep the program kind of short. One of the things that I had a few weeks ago, that's comment and kept hearing from staff, we still keeping that opening about an hour long? So we won't be doing that for everyone. So we'd like to, love to have the board members attended possibly.
Where do we have them?
It will be here at Steel in the laboratory.
I will not be an attendance because I have a court date that I can't get out. Okay? So I will not be. So I told Mike that also. So he will handle it. Okay?
What are the rules for opening? Are we allowed to say hi to people? Like, I see my child, see you like, hi, how are you?
Yeah, so normally we have, yeah, so normally we have rows of chairs, everyone gets, there's kind of a breakfast. I'd like to have tables. I'd like to have tables with a little more breakfast so people can sit down with each other and say hello, mingle, have a little more relaxed style. So absolutely come and walk around, hear people say hello, grab food.
Are we expected to say anything at this, or we're just there to observe?
Normally we have the, normally.
It's not happening.
Normally I have the president speak and the president be there, and ask the vice president to say a few words, and that's okay with everyone, and.
I don't know if the cheese is okay with it.
I did, I did mess her, and she said she'd be okay with it. For you guys.
She said, fear has been. I'd say, love to be there, but I can't.
Oh, one more item, if that's okay? I do have your athletic passes for the board members. So this is your pass to get into all Southwest Conference events, both here and away. So any away meets, away games, it's for you and another guest, so you can attend any Southwest Conference event, home and away, with another person for free.
But it doesn't work in tournaments?
Doesn't work on tournaments, right. Or the end of season.
So just make sure if volleyball, if volleyball teams want a tournament, we will not get you in. And you have got to get your own ticket, okay?
She's a big girl. Maybe.
What's your name, Ken?
But then, I think. Correct?
Correct.
So if we can vote on the adjourned motion?
Mrs. Wachols?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.